Good evening and welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Inishewa, Bojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order and a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. It resolved the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We approve this review.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. Councillor Shaba?
Please, Madam Chair. I, Lad Shaba, am declaring direct in and or indirect. Declaring interest in the agenda of the meeting dated Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. An open meeting. Agenda item number 6.1. Agenda title Archer Drive Industrial Park Service Expansion NOHFC Contribution Agreement. It is indirect. I'm a director of a private corporation. Which of the initial of my interests as follows. My engineering firm worked for CHR Technologies in the past. And may likely work for them in the future. I'm reading and signed by me.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from council? I have several this evening. I, Stacy White. Am declaring a deemed pecuniary interest on the agenda meeting dated September 5th, 2023 in open session. Agenda item number 6.4. Agenda title is request to enter into a lease agreement with Fifty Government Road West Limited. It is deemed the matter may affect my parent, my spouse, or my child. The nature of my interest is as follows. My husband is employed by this company and though it has no financial. Uh, sorry, it has no bearing on his finances. It is best that I step away. Item number 6.10 on September 5th, 2023. It is indirect. The agenda item is 6.10, Community Grant Funding Application, Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce. It is indirect as I am a shareholder, director, or officer of a private corporation affected. I have controlling interest in a public corporation affected. I am a member of a body. I am a partner or employee of a person of a body. But the pecuniary interest, the nature of my interest is as follows. Though I sit on this board only by virtue of being elected to council, I feel it is best to step away from the item at this meeting. Uh, I, Stacy White, am declaring deemed pecuniary interest on agenda. Uh, meeting dated September 5th, 2023 in open. The agenda item number is 8.4. Agenda title bylaw number 23-060. It is deemed the matter may affect my parent, my spouse, or my child. The nature of my interest is as follows. My husband is employed by this company and though this has no bearing on his finances, it is best I step away. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number four, petitions and delegations. There are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendation, 5.1, council minutes.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dolly Dyken. It resolved the council through the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held August 15th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. 5.2, committees for council minutes.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. It resolved the council about the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee held April 26th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item 5.3, local and regional wards.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that council received the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board held April 12th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Item 6.1, Archer Drive Industrial Park Service Expansion NOHFC Contribution Agreement. Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
Uh, you, uh, Madam Mayor, before I actually begin the report, I would like to introduce Galen Cranston, uh, Director of Stakeholder Relations for Charter Technologies. Uh, Mr. Cranston will give an updated account on the project, after which then I will address the, uh, the details of the report. So, Mr. Cranston, welcome, and, uh, please provide us update.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor White, for providing me the opportunity to present to the members of the Kirkland Lake Council. Uh, a very brief update, but I'll quickly refresh the project for anyone who hasn't previously, uh, met with me. Uh, we are proposing to acquire and develop land adjacent to the Roscoe Sawmill. Uh, we want to build a high-temperature paralysis, uh, wood waste to renewable natural gas and bio-carbon facility. Uh, in plain English, Kirkland Lake is a very ideal site for us. Uh, the town and indigenous communities consulted with have been great to deal with thus far. Uh, and what we're looking to do is to develop this project to replicate the facility we already have operational in Southern Ontario in the Niagara region. Uh, we will be looking to purchase local sources of wood waste that are traditionally landfilled or burned or left as slash in the forest. And we're looking for around 75,000 tons per year of that. Uh, this has been the bulk of our outreach to the indigenous communities as well as local, uh, forest operators such as Roscoe. What we do with that wood waste, wood waste, uh, in its simplest terms is we're putting it inside a kiln that we refer to as high-temperature paralysis. Externally heat the material so nothing burns because there's no oxygen in there. And now at the other side, we're able to produce renewable natural gas to replace natural gas in any of its applications. Uh, and a bio-carbon that has great application in both steel mining and agriculture. So, uh, starting October, uh, as in month from now. Uh, our engineers will be in the Kirkland Lake region, uh, beginning the engineering and design work, also known as FEED work, which will prepare us for the 2024 construction season. And we are aiming to commission the facility in 2025, uh, understanding full well that northern weather, weather can alter these timelines pretty quickly, so. Um, in short, please don't hesitate to say hello if you see any of our team members in town. And I'm always available to speak to the community about the project.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, our CAO will continue with the report. We do appreciate if you'd like to stay on. If there's any questions, we really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Galen. Um, the committee's project happens with part of funding. So, the town's application to the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation uh, for funding under the community enhancement program shot to $457,377 for service expansion of the Archer Drive Industrial Park was successful. Uh, this entails the need to execute a contribution agreement. Uh, this amount matches the fund secured with Bednor, Simaun. Uh, the total project cost is over a million dollars and the funding we received covers approximately 90%. Uh, with remainder 10% being over $100,000, which the town will cover. But eventually Charter will cover that cost. I do want to say that Charter deciding to open Kirkland Lake is exciting for this community. As mentioned, Charter plans to build a facility capable of converting wood biomass to renewable natural gas, biocoal, and green hydrogen. This is a $35 million investment, which is great for the economic value of the community and for the growth of the community. So with that, I would welcome your questions.
Council members, any questions? It appears there are none. We definitely want to extend our gratitude for you picking Kirkland Lake for this site. Um, I was sitting on council when you first came. Um, and definitely we appreciate your time and the energy that you've, um, expended on this project. We know that it has not been easy, um, environmentally. Um, so we definitely appreciate your time and we look forward to seeing you, uh, and members of your team next term. So, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate that. Yep. Only reason I wasn't here in person is I've got a pregnant wife and a two-year-old and, uh, just got off the bush and out of the lake yesterday, so couldn't make the trip this time.
You're definitely forgiven.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 38 entitled Archer Drive Industrial Park Service Expansion NOHFC Contribution Agreement. We received and that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute a contribution agreement and any related amendments proposed in favor of the municipality without detrimental financial impact with the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation, so NOHFC, for funding under a community enhancement program of up to $457,377 towards service expansion of the Archer Drive Industrial Park. And finally, that an execution by law be brought forward for three readings on September 5th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Thank you. Then 6.2, deeming bylaw application for lots 32 and 33 of registered plan M131-BT Brooklyn Roseon Acting Planning Administrator.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, we received a, an application uh, for a deeming bylaw to merge, uh, 76 and 80 Federal Street for the construction of the deck that would encroach over the lot line. And then each lot is 4,000 square feet. Both are within the R1 residential of the dense zone. 80 Federal Street is a single-family dwelling and 76 Federal Street is vacant land. And the subdivision plan was registered in 1939 and, uh, council has, uh, authority to designate any plan that's been registered for eight years or more as not part of a subdivision, which would allow the two lots to merge on title and allow the applicant to, uh, construct their deck in the location that they want. Um, a fee of $835 was collected for the application, a portion of which recovers the legal costs of registering the deeming bylaw on title and the bylaw will be presented later in the agenda.
Okay, so that's it. Any questions from council? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 31 entitled deeming bylaw application for lots 32 and 33 of registered plan M135P. We received that council enacted deeming bylaw pursuant to section 54 of the Plan Act. So as to deem lots 32 and 33 registered by M135P as not being registered lots within a planned subdivision. And finally, that a deeming bylaw be brought forward for three readings on September 5th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number 6.3, deeming bylaw application for lots 10 and 11 of registered plan 54M-346 Brooklyn Roseon Acting Planning Administrator. We're making deeming.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. So the owner of 29 Harvey Drive is requesting to deem their lots together um, for the construction of a detached garage that would encroach over the lot line. The lots were previously consolidated into one tax rule number, uh, a few years ago. Uh, the deeming bylaw is to, uh, legally merge them on title so that one can't be sold without the other. Lot 10 would, it has a area of 0.89 hectares. Lot 11 has an area of 0.91 hectares. They're both in the rural estates development zone, which has a minimum, minimum lot, uh, area of 0.8 hectares. So both lots are near the minimum. Uh, and again, this, uh, the subdivision plan that they're registered, uh, on was registered in 1990, so again, more than eight years ago. Uh, the same fee of $835 was collected, a portion of which again goes toward the local cost of registering the deeming bylaw. And the bylaw will be presented later in the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 32 entitled deeming bylaw application for lots 10 and 11 of registered plan 54M346. We received that council enacted deeming bylaw pursuant to section 54 of the Plan Act. So as to deem lots 10 and 11 registered by 54M346 as not being registered lots within a planned subdivision. And finally, that deeming bylaw be brought forward for three readings on September 5th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. At this time, I'm going to ask councillor, we're going to take our winner as acting chair for the next item.
Yes, and Brooklyn, you're on again.
Right. Good morning, Acting Mayor and Council. Uh, in 2017, uh, council agreed to enter into a lease agreement with, uh, the owner of Fifty Government Road West for 25 parking spaces that would accommodate the, uh, apartment buildings that were being constructed. Construction was put on hold and so was the finalization of the agreement. Uh, they have since resumed construction, wish to, uh, move forward with the agreement. However, amendments were needed, um, to update the agreement to match the town's current user fees and to match the, um, the owner's current business name. The application, uh, the town received, uh, 215 for the application. Uh, some of 370 will be collected for the development of the agreement. And, uh, there will be a yearly revenue of $6,000 per year, um, which is equal to $20 per parking space per month. And again, the bylaw will be brought forward later in the agenda.
Any questions from council? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, Acting Mayor. Um, I'd just like to know, uh, the process of doing this because we, we have, uh, there are two neighbors around, like the Curling Club and then the Curling Shins Club, right? Do they have any objection to this? Because when this goes through, this part of parking lot would be as significant for this business, right? Is there, do you, whether the competition with businesses and there are no. It's not there. I don't think they're allowed, but I just, I just want to know.
Uh, so it's the portion of the parking lot that's further away. Um, it is on the side closer, but the Curling Club has their own designated parking. So this would be just be within the municipal lot and it's, um, only a certain portion. The rest of the lot is still free for municipal use or public usage.
Good, thank you.
Any further questions? May, Madam Chair, if you could read the resolution, please.
Certainly. Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 39 entitled request to enter into a lease agreement with Fifty Government Road West Limited. We received for information.
Oh, all those favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thank you. Councillor, acting mayor, Owen. Item number 6.5, award of contract request for rotation for elevator modernization upgrade at Free Kirkland Street West Town Hall. Sean LeCart, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. May I report forward today? Um, as, as you know, um, the elevators did some, uh, major upgrades, uh, in the last year or two. So, uh, we're looking forward to moving ahead with this. Um, on May 10th, uh, uh, our Q was put out, Engage Contractor, and, uh, we first contacted the Near North Elevator Consulting Firm. Um, obviously, uh, we don't have anyone with, uh, the expertise around elevator, uh, municipality. Um, so they were, uh, brought forward. We had used them in the past, uh, and, uh, they've obviously benefited to the, to the, uh, process. Um, uh, once received, we received four, uh, four companies, uh, and sent in a bids. At that time, uh, the bids were fairly high and they included a bit of extra in terms of cart work, uh, for the, the actual elevator. Um, so we did ask them to go back, uh, and see what they can do about decreasing costs and, uh, and removing the hardware. They'll, even Near North said the, the car is actually in really, really good shape. It really didn't need that. We thought we would get, I think they thought they would get a itemized report that they could pick, but they didn't have that possible. So we did get, we did get the, uh, the final submissions back and TK Elevator was the lowest submission. The overall project, uh, will take, uh, 36 week, uh, 34 weeks, sorry, uh, completed in April of 2024. Um, very similar between all, all four, uh, for, uh, bids. The final implications, uh, were a little wee bit over, were $2,785 over the $135,000 allotment. Um, because we are going into 23, 24, 24, uh, we should be able to, uh, just include that in the, uh, in the operating budget at that point or capital budget. Um, and it's enough, uh, at the same time when, uh, when we received the, uh, the bids, we also renegotiated, uh, the service maintenance contract. Um, because, because it is going to be, we don't expect them to have to come this often. Once it's done, uh, we went from $650 to $388 a month. So that was a benefit at the end of the contracts. So administration does recommend the council proceed with the word of the contracts, uh, with TK Elevator and, uh, accept any questions if we have any.
Members of council, any questions? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion here.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. It resolved that report number 2023 Corp. 07 entitled award of contract request for provision for elevator modernization upgrade at Free Kirkland Street West Town Hall be received. And that council hereby award a contract to TK Elevator Canada Limited. As per the terms set out in RFQ 59223, elevator modernization and the sum of $133,575 plus HST. And that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the elevator modernization between the corporation of the town of Kirkland and TK Elevator Canada Limited. And finally, that a, uh, that a bylaw authorized the execution of an agreement. Uh, any, any related subcontracts and subsequent amendments proposed in favor of the municipality without detrimental financial impact be brought forward for three readings on September 5th, 23.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item 6.6, thank you, Mr. Rick LeCart. Request to enter into encroachment agreement on part, on part mining claim 2644 parcel 7149 CST Newton. Welcome back, Brooklyn Roseon, acting planning administrator.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. So a request to encroach was received from Mr. Redmond Newton uh, to park his work vehicle on the municipal lot across the street from his residence. Um, his, uh, lot doesn't accommodate his off-street parking needs and as we do not allow on-street parking during winter months. This is a necessity in that area as well. The street is very narrow and it's a dead-end street, so. Um, and he, on-street parking affects traffic flow even in the summertime, so. He, uh, moved forward with, uh, his application. Um, there was a revenue of 215 for, uh, the submission of the application. $370 for the, uh, development of the agreement. And this, uh, agreement will result in a revenue of $182.51 per year, which, uh, will, is subject to change for the, um, user fees on a yearly basis. And as with the other ones, this one will also be moving forward with the bylaw later in the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 40 entitled request to enter into encroachment agreement on part mining of them 2644 parcel 7149 CST Newton. We receive for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item 6.7, request to purchase part of 69 and 73 Branch Street. Brooklyn Roseon, we make the decision.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, request of purchase was received in April of 2021 by the services coma pushing to purchase carts of 1673 Branch Street, uh, which are vacant wooded, wooded lots, uh, in, just in behind their, uh, current inhabitants. Uh, in February, council, uh, moved to approve the land sale, $20 per square foot. We were waiting on a survey for the running off price. Um, after receiving the survey, the, to calculate the price, it will result in a revenue of $5,597.24 including future tax revenue as the lots will be merged with their existing lot. And as with the other ones, this one will be the bylaw we brought forward later in the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 41 entitled request to purchase part of 69 and 73 Branch Street be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item 6.8, request for increased funding, community grants program. Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To members of the council. The purpose of the community, community grant program is to support individuals, organizations, educate projects, activities, advance the community, enhance quality of life for Kirkland Lake citizens. This year, the community grant program has a budget of $15,000. However, $10,000 has already been dispersed with additional $6,464 in applications under consideration. These are, they're invited to upcoming reports tonight. In order to accommodate these two applications and possibly more in 2023, administration is recommending increasing the community program by $10,000 with the funds being drawn from the community improvement plan reserve. So the rationale, uh, for using the community improvement plan reserve and the program, they are both intended to support the vitality of the community. And also the community improvement grant plan reserve currently has a balance of just over $200,000. So there's not much to cover the $10,000. If, with that, any questions? Council may have.
Thank you. And before I open the floor, I do want to make the comment that when this was brought to council last term, we were unsure of how much to allocate, um, because it was a new program. Um, and so I think as we're gaining steam in this program, we're seeing more and more people come to apply in more groups that we can help. And so definitely, I personally agree with increasing the allotment. Um, there's definitely a need in our community and if we can support all these groups, we definitely should. Members of council, any questions or comments? None noted.
I'll read the motion. Sorry, that's okay. Um, moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that report number 2023 DEV 34 entitled request for increased funding, community grant program be received. And finally, the council directed transfer of $10,000 from the community improvement plan reserve to the community grants program for anticipated applications for financial assistance in 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number 6.9, community grant funding application, Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Junior A Hockey Club. Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Uh, the town received an application, uh, to the community grants program from the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Junior A Hockey Club, a amount of $11,620.21. The application was then presented to the Kirkland Lake Economic Bond Advisory Group. Now, the request comprises in-kind contribution of $6,264.71, inclusive HST, to cover, uh, dress costs such as dressing room, the trainer's room, coach's office, laundry room rental at the community complex. There also comprised of the request value that $5,000 There also comprised of the request value that five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, inclusive HST, to waive the annual fee. The gold miners are contracted to pay to the Joe Maverick Community Complex with exclusive right to sell arena advertising. The committee reviewed the application and has recommended council to approve five thousand dollars to be used to offset the operating costs associated with the use of municipal facilities during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four season. However, the committee did not recommend approval of the request to waive the annual fee of five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, as this is a separate contractual agreement between the hockey club and the town. Now, I do want to note that the amount to offset the operating costs excluding HST is five thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. The committee is recommending five thousand dollars as this is the maximum amount, uh, per policy. Uh, will be any questions?
Any questions or comments from council members? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be resolved at report number twenty-two-three D E B thirty-five, entitled Community Grant Funding Application, Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Junior A Hockey Club, be received. And that council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee's recommendation dated August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, surrounding the funding request made by the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Junior A Hockey Club under the community grant program. And finally, the council approved the Kirkland Lake Gold Miner Junior A Hockey Club's request under the community grants program for an in-kind contribution of five thousand dollars used to offset operating costs associated with the use of municipal facilities during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four season, contingent on sufficient funds being available within the community grants program.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. At this time, I'm going to ask Acting Mayor Owen to resume the chair for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, next item is Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce, uh, request for, for, uh, community grant funding and, uh, C A O Alan Smith will make the presentation.
Good. Acting Mayor through members of council. The town received a funding application for two thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents from the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce for the community grants program. The contribution will be used by the chamber to help cover the costs of administering the twenty-two-three Sack Cost Parade. The application was considered by our Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee on August sixteenth. The committee passed a resolution recommending that municipal council approve the contribution towards the eligible costs. And thanking Councilor Dykens for pointing out at the council that the committee meeting, identifying in the application totaling one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Given that the application meets the program requirements, uh, the Economic Development Committee is recommending council that, uh, this application be approved, especially now that there is sufficient funds to be, uh, uh, programmed. I welcome any questions.
Thank you.
For you, Acting Mayor, to C A O Alan. Can you just clarify for me that the qual, how much the qualifying, uh, amount is based on in comparison to the amount they actually asked for, or is it the amount that they asked for that is meeting their requirements? I just.
Yes, there was the difference between what they asked for and what they're receiving. Uh, I believe there was some labor costs involved that, that did meet the program requirement. So, um, during the meeting, it was pointed out by Councilor Dykens that there was a discrepancy and as we, we, we adjusted for representation.
Okay, thank you.
Any, uh, further questions or comments? Okay, I have one comment to make. Having five young grandchildren, I do not want to play spurs. So I'm hoping council will look on this favorably. Madam Burke, could you read the resolution, please?
Certainly. Um, I'm going to have to move a second here here. Uh, Councilor Dykens, are you okay? Yeah. Okay. Cause I have Councilor Owen moving, but he's carrying his phone. Uh, moved by Councilor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councilor Janice Ranger, be resolved at report number twenty-two-three D E B thirty-six, entitled Community Grant Funding Application, Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce, be received. And that council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee recommendation dated August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, surrounding the funding requests made by the Kirkland Lake and District Chamber of Commerce under the community grants program. And finally, that council approved the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce's request under the community grants program for contribution to be based on eligible costs and the sum of one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars to be used to offset costs associated with the twenty-twenty-three Sack Cost Parade, contingent on sufficient funds being available within the community grants program.
I'll listen, babe. Opposed? Carrie.
Um, Acting Chair, can I ask a question or clarification?
Let me think about it. Okay.
Uh, do you, Acting Chair, do you see, um, when there is a discrepancy and, and we come back with a lower amount, do we send any explanation or we just say this is the proof now?
Of you, uh, Acting Mayor. Um, members of the council, that is a very good question. Um, I believe that, uh, I'd have to check with how we have administered in the past if an explanation is provided. I imagine, uh, the, there should, oh, it would be some sort of indication of why there's a discrepancy. Um, I can imagine if we didn't, then the organization would be on the phone and why they discuss it. So, uh, by mistake, I need to confirm, uh, our previous practice and, uh, caution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen. Item number six point one-one, Community Improvement Plan Funding Application, Forty-four Water Lane, Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
You, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the town received a request, uh, cemented by Kirkland Lake, Kirkland Curling Limited, under the community improvement plan for a contribution of five thousand dollars to use for replacing key components of their ice making plant. The contribution would be drawn from the twenty-twenty-four economic development operating budget and confirmed upon confirmation that the project will proceed. Kirkland Curling Limited currently in the process of securing funding from the senior levels of government. For this reason, uh, the estimated timeline for the project, uh, looking at the July or August twenty-twenty-four start, uh, the funds within be distributed by December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the latest, after which municipality's commitment will be rescinded and any money is to be returned to the municipality. Funding is contingent on sufficient funds being available within the C I team and the Economic Development Advisory Committee recommends to council that the application be approved.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted.
Moved by Councilor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councilor Janice Ranger, be resolved at report number twenty-two-three D E B thirty-seven, entitled Community Improvement Plan Funding Application, Forty-four Water Lane, be received. And that council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee's recommendation dated August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, surrounding the community improvement plan funding requests made by Kirkland Curling Limited. And finally, the council approved that the sum of five thousand dollars in funding be drawn from the twenty-twenty-four community improvement plan reserve towards Kirkland Curling Limited's submission and replacing key components of the ice making plant at Forty-four Water Lane.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six point one-two, paving and parking construction, accessible parking at fifty-five Allen Avenue, Joe Maverick Community Complex, Bonnie Zappreider, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to all of council. In twenty-twenty-two, there were two capital budget projects that were approved by council that are mentioned in this report. The first one was a side parking lot upgrade at the Joe Maverick Community Complex. That project was completed quite significantly under the budgeted amount. The second project that we're speaking about is the Allen Avenue Accessible Parking and Paving Renewal. We did attempt to obtain quotes for this project in twenty-twenty-two, and although we did have site visits, none of the individuals who came to site visits did provide a quote. So again, in twenty-twenty-three, we did put a request for a quotation out and, um, we did receive two quotations. Both of them were over budget. What this project will include is six, um, accessible parking spaces at the community complex. There's a combination of what is required under, it is a combination of two spots that are required now. I think a lot of the, the type A and the type B, and they basically differ in width. In between each parking spot, the accessible aisle is required and there has to be visual identification. So it is a big change to what we have right now. What we're looking for from council is to look at the, the dollars that were not spent in the side parking lot project and to allocate those basically to this project to fund the shortfall. If council would like to go ahead with this project. So when the dollars are not spent, um, and because it was in a previous year, those dollars basically get back, put back into a reserve. So we're looking to see if you'd like to spend those dollars from a reserve to complete this project. So the, the, I guess the main point is that there is no, no new money required. It is a reallocation of funds. And the reallocation would total them, um, ninety-nine thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-one. The original approved sum was just under fifty-two thousand dollars. Opened any questions?
Thank you. Just before, um, I open the floor, I just want you to reiterate why it's coming from the life cycle replacement. Can you just say again how that, those funds?
So when the dollars are not spent in a fiscal year, they have to get placed into a reserve fund for council deliberation and how to spend in the future. So in this situation, the dollars not spent from the lighting project went into the life cycle reserve fund and that's where they would be now be drawn from.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from council? Councilor Dykens?
Uh, through Madam Mayor, to you, Dr. Sacra. This is a legal requirement.
It is a legal requirement to have accessible parking, um, after a renovation. So right now, where we do meet the criteria is the surfacing. So it is like, um, a cold press is, is what the surfacing is. It's not ideal. It's not the best surfacing, but it does meet the requirement. Where we don't meet the requirement is in terms of having the painting on the pavement as well as the visual identification.
Councilor Owen?
Could, oh, sorry. Through you worship to, uh, Ms. Sacra, could the painting not be done on the cold press? I realize it may have to be redone more often, but could it not be done on the cold press material that's there?
I would have to, to check if that's doable. I mean, I would, I believe it's doable. I don't know. I have not, I don't, I don't have the expertise to know whether.
Yeah, no, I'm just one of that. That's a potential option because we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, or we only budgeted fifty thousand. So. And, and I realize that pavement is pavement's kind of way up in price because it's an oil product and there's also been a consolidation in the industry. So you can't go to ten different paving manufacturers and get so the price is gonna, I, I know those snappers, but I'm just wondering if we.
Can I provide a further explanation on that?
Sure.
Um, through Madam Mayor to Councilor Owen. Um, the project will also include a little bit of ground remediation because if you can visualize the area right now where we have the accessible parking, if it's flat and then it goes up. So we have to kind of work that down because we can't have more than a two percent grade. So that is one area that we're not in compliance with right now is a two percent grade. So we wouldn't get six parking spots without, um, adjusting the grade.
Okay. Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask a second there? Um, right now we have, I believe it's two spots for, uh, people with young children. Um, are those spots going to remain?
Three, three, Councilor Owen, or three of the mayor, she can't throw one. Um, those parking spots will not remain because of the legislative requirement for width. We have to use the whole entire area for acceptable parking. So where, where you're going to see a difference is it goes by millimeters. I think it's either twenty-four hundred millimeters or thirty-four hundred millimeters for type A, type B, and then you need an access aisle or fifteen hundred millimeters. So when you add the access aisle on, it really increases the width of what the requirement is.
Could we find, could we find another location because a lot of council with young children and babies attend the complex on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Councilor Owens?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Sacra already answered, won't kind of explain the, the hill situation there. I hope I, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Anything further from council members? All that's everything in the morning.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Janice Ranger, be resolved at report number twenty-two-three C F oh-oh-three, entitled paving and parking construction, accessible parking at fifty-five Allen Avenue, Joe Maverick Community Complex, be received. And finally, the council hereby approved to fund a sum of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents from the twenty-twenty-three life cycle replacement fund for the paving and parking construction, accessible parking at the Joe Maverick Community Complex.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carrying unanimous. Six point one, spring, snappy playground update, Bonnie Zappreider, Director of Community Services. Continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to all the council. This is another project that was approved by council in twenty-twenty-two as a capital project. In twenty-twenty-two, um, staff did reach out to the Public Utility Locate Service to have locates done as the first requirement. They were not completed in twenty-twenty-two. We were told it was because of staffing, um, shortfalls. We reached out again this spring to have locates done and they were able to be done. Once the locates were done in the park app, which council had approved to have the playground placed in, we realized that there are a number of utilities that you run through basically the middle of the park app, which is unfortunate. So we sent to various Ontario playground suppliers, equipment suppliers, what we were working with. Uh, we didn't get any response. We found a bit unusual. Typically, people are very keen to quote. So when we reached out again, they explained to us two different things. Um, one is the safety zone that's required for playground equipment is typically eighteen feet. We had the max sixteen feet to work with. So when you think of at some of our playgrounds in town that have one large feature that has a slide and a swing and, and a couple of different items, um, those would not be able to be installed here. The other thing they mentioned was that the budget was too low. So we asked again and said, okay, if you had a little bit more money without going over top, um, and you could do some standalone pieces, what would you give us? So they were all able to, to provide us with some options. So we did get eight different options back. Um, quite a variety of what could be done, but it's not maybe the traditional playground that you have seen in other areas. A lot of standalone areas, but there is a play factor and a fun factor. So we did have a bit of a small focus group of parents of young children to take a look at, at these different playground scenarios and what do you think? So they could kind of boil it down to two, which are fairly similar looking, two different suppliers. Um, because this was a direction from council, I thought it might be nice to have council's, um, input on this as well because it's not exactly what I think I envisioned to be happening in this location. And I didn't want, I wanted to have the, the public to have an opportunity to understand why this is what we are able to live with. So it's a narrower area. Um, it's not maybe the traditional, but it still is a, a play factor and a fun factor. When you're looking at what came in, um, the cost of the two different options that we've provided with you are for, just over forty, just under forty-four thousand and just under forty-seven thousand. This is either eight thousand three hundred or eleven thousand two hundred, more than what was previously allocated. So once again, we're, we're looking to see if council is interested in allocating dollars that were not spent from the lighting project last year. And actually, um, it's not really the life cycle replacement. This would be more like a parkland reserve that the dollars from last year's shopping, you know, unspent would go back into, um, to see if council was interested in allocating a bit more to, um, have this, this project completed.
Thank you. Before I open the floor to questions, I just want to say, I just, I really appreciate that you used, um, members of the public to kind of whittle the options down. I think it really reinforces that we're a community that tries to include our members when we're making decisions. And I think that'll really, um, in, increase the amount of like ownership in the community of this area and definitely pride. So thank you for, for doing that. That's going over and above. Uh, personally, I believe in option number one. I've looked at both, um, and as a mom of two now grown children, off their land seems the best option. Personally, the only question I do have about this area, will benches be available as well? Cause it wasn't in the, the plans, but.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, that's a great question. So I would like to do that as a, as a part B. So there is definitely area. Um, so if you kind of envision the swath of land being long and linear, we're going to be building the playground closest to the, the tree line. We'll have to leave a little area. It can be ground, or we just can't dig there, but we definitely have space then to put some benches or picnic tables or a shade structure or whatever. So I definitely like to do that as a part.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Members of council, Councilor Owens?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm wrong. Um, most of our parks are fenced. Correct. There's the fence as well.
Through you, Councilor Owens? No, I did it wrong every time. Through Madam Mayor, Councilor Owens. Um, again, in this situation, we have not allocated any dollars for fencing. So when you take a look at it, there's a natural division from the highway with the property line. We would stay closer to Shafi proper, so it'd be farther from the highway. But we definitely spoke about, we could put, uh, a nice wooden fence up to delineate. So that a child that might be running wouldn't run over to the highway. We're gonna try to, uh, place all of the equipment, as I said, closer to the Shafi side, but a, a fence could be, could be put up.
My concern, well, my concern for this question is like, we close our parks in the winter. So how do we plan, short of having to use ugly snow fence, how do we plan on closing this off?
And I'll get it right this time. Through Madam Mayor, Councilor Owens, we probably would be the ugly snow fence, very similar to what you see at Kinross Park. So at Kinross, it's the same idea. It's a, it's a playground that has no fence around it, so we wrap the pieces with snow fence. So as long as we've done something that is legitimately visual and would deter people from using it. Um, that, that's what, from a risk management standpoint, we look for. It is a bit more work because people do pull down a little fence.
Thank you. Spencer Ranger?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to, uh, Bonnie, is there, since you're the expert in playground equipment. Is there a preferred, uh, option that you recommend?
Um. Through Madam Mayor, Councilor Ranger, my preference, and it is more from where I think we'll get the most fun for the kids, is option one.
Thank you. Councilor Owen?
Uh, through you, your worship, to Director Sacra. Um, based on a very small sample of three, because two of my grandchildren aren't old enough to go to the playgrounds. The thought of making noise and music in a park is just marvelous. They, they just gravitate to a place where they can bang on a drum or, or whatever, like. I can't tell in detail what's there. Um, but I mean, I'm, I'm happy with either option. I'm very glad to see this project going ahead. And in terms of safety, you do have those, uh, I think they're six by sixes or eight by eights. Uh, they're about four feet high right along the highway's side there. And it wouldn't be, uh, a huge expense if we did it in-house. Just to fill in like to the top of those. Um, it'd be minimal expense. Um, and, and, and I think we probably should for liability reasons. Um, because, uh, I, I did see some kids playing in there the other day, kicking a soccer ball around. I guess I'll have to find a new place to get your soccer ball around, but no, I, I even, either option is, I think is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Does either member of council that wished to, did not speak, or any member of council that did not speak to which option they prefer? Would you care to say your option just for a point of interest as the director brought it for kind of a group consensus? So it could be part of the planning as well. Councilor Shabba?
With you, uh, uh, to the director, I'm just glad that this is, uh, going ahead. Because every time I go to the post office that we use, I have to duck a lot of people. Because that's first question coming out of people whenever we go on playground. And, uh, you know, we have a lot of children in Shafi used now. And my next door neighbor just moved in two weeks ago to want three children. So, uh, it is, uh, waiting for children in Shafi used now all over too. I mean, wait, you can bring the branch that over. One, that's when, that's when you want to crack a leg.
I'll get them to you. No problem.
So I'm, I thank you very much for the efforts of this staff and, um, I'm excited that this is going to, uh, proceed and go late. But we shall run ground, I don't know. Few months, we have the snow melt. I, I really don't have any preference, so I mean. Um, you know, if I have young children, maybe I will ask them, for me, just let them see a place for kids to, and then bend their. Um, and if it's invested, so I have a preference when it comes to that.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Owen?
Um, just to, to you, your worship, to Councilor Shabba. In the old days, you used to put warning posters up in the, uh, post office. Maybe you could post these and. Post these and get additional input on which is the preferred. Just throwing that out there.
I think the, the goal for this evening was to make a decision at the table. So what we will need is a mover and a seconder who will be brave enough to make the choice of option one or option two. So, um, Councilor Dykens, would you like to move with a specific option?
I would. I, I would move option one.
Councilor Owens, would you second?
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, first, that way it's gonna hand.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to amend the main motion as follows. So moved by Councilor Dykens, seconded by Councilor, uh, Owens. Uh, be it resolved in report number twenty-two-three, C F O O four, entitled. Back to you, playground update received. And finally, for some of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars from the twenty-twenty-three parkland reserve fund that we allocated to the W V V's playground project.
All in favor? opposed? Not noted. Item carrying unanimous. Thank you. Item number six point one four. Interim, no interim financial report year-to-date as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, Lloyd Propper.
Through Madam Mayor, through you to council. So we're here finally. Big sort of mission in the middle of the year. Well, towards the end of the year, I guess, but representing the middle of the year. Um. The report itself points out a few things, a few assumptions we made, a few, and directions we picked. Uh, some of that is just from feedback within the S and T. Um, some of it is just from my experience, uh, trying to dissipate where we want to kind of go with the report. Um, you'll know, I pointed out a few of them. I chose twenty percent as a variance level. And that's really so that we don't have a fifty-page report, which, you know, really doesn't get us to the point of what we were trying to do today, I think. Uh, most, most of the expenditures fall within pretty close to budgeted amounts. There's not an awful lot of line items here that vary significantly. Um. That's kind of the big picture point of it. The. Admin and other lines are the most consistent variation you see there. Uh, we have some catch-up to do in the Treasury Department. It's really a timing thing. In the past, we wouldn't do some of these entries till near the end of the year. So we're kind of caught off in the sense that I was following a pattern and didn't do these entries. So they're not done yet. Primarily, that's insurance and some of the reserve transfers. We don't, you know, post them during the year. They're not really a live transaction. They're more an allocation than anything else. So they're not built into this either. So you can see an awful lot of the line item comments will be pointing out insurance or reserve transfer. So just to be clear about the reserve transfers, they're budget-driven. So when we passed the budget earlier in the year, there was plenty of places where we talked about transferring monies back and forth. To fund different programs and different, um, line items. And that's really what we haven't done. It doesn't change, um, the practical, the, the real experience that we have here, how much we spend versus budget. Other than those particular lines. So with, with that said, I wasn't planning on going through every page. But I'd be happy to take a run at any questions you guys have. Um, there's a chance I might ask somebody to come forward if you get quite detailed and I don't know the answer. But, um, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to our treasurer. I appreciate the midway report and the explanation as to why certain things, uh. Were late in coming or won't be posted until later. That made it much more clear to me and, um, in layman's terms. So I appreciate the report and the explanations that were part of the. Report that was brought to us, not just the spreadsheet numbers, but the actual report itself. So thank you.
Anything further from council? Nothing noted. I will have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Casey Owen, to be resolved. That report number twenty-two-three, been zero, zero, nine, entitled income financial report year-to-date, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-five-three, be received for a third.
All in favor? Opposed? Not noted. Item carrying unanimous. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask Acting Mayor Owen to take control of the meeting and act as chair. I'm going to push away from the chair position, but I will be participating from the social. Seven point one. Oh.
That's not good.
Can I call privilege at this point? Uh, are you jumping?
Sure, go ahead and I'll be.
Yeah, just have a privilege, uh, um. At the beginning, I declared a component of interest and, uh, divided in six point one. And I realized there were one that is another item that's tied to this. Item six point one is item eight point five. We don't be, uh, Madam, uh, Mr. Uh, chairman, and I just declare a copy of interest until we get to item eight point five by this time.
Yes, you may, um, just read the, uh, form and.
Yeah, so, uh, I, La Chava, uh, declaring, uh, direct, he will be directing very interest on the agenda. For the meeting here Tuesday, September two thousand and three, a local meeting, item number eight point five. Agenda type is bylaw number twenty-three dash zero six one, uh, twenty-three dash zero six one, execution by law, N O H F C. We seem direct, uh, um, the order of private operation. And my firm work for C H A R in the past, and like to work for them in the future. But I fix my name to this and my signature as well. Thank you. Yeah.
Madam Owen? Okay, we will now, uh, proceed to, uh. Uh, consideration those, those motions and, uh, Councilor. Of these moments, head to the floor. Thank you.
I, I just want to make sure we're on the right page here. It's a lot of responsibility.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so since we've been on council for two terms now, it's come up many, many times that our fire hall. Is past its due date. Uh, it, it's got structural issues. The fire trucks, the, our frontline apparatus, main pump, bear that fits in there. Uh, our new, our second time new pump or ladder to us is not going to fit in there. We have to find alternate parking locations. Uh, so if I go to the dentist and between each tool he needs, he needs to go to next door neighbors to get a piece of equipment. Like, you know, time is the essence. You call it, I don't want your buildings on fire. You want your fire department to have access to their tools. So I think it's time that this council seriously considers. Moving forward with the replacement of the current fire hall. Uh, I think we need, uh, maybe look at the sign, uh, design, uh, plans. What envision as a fire hall, find a suitable location that will fit those criterias, then show us the ground and get a fire hall built. In a nutshell.
Uh, Councilor Shabba?
Sorry, I'm playing in order.
What size is?
So as a seconder, you're supposed to have my last one first.
Yes.
Say it.
The seconder usually has to go first. Who's second? Second or the motion?
Yes, yes, sorry.
So yeah, so just, uh, in addition, uh, for support of Councilor Owens', um, motion. Uh, this was actually identified in a COMAX fire master report prior to any of us being elected. So this has been going on for, for a very, very long time, since twenty-seventeen. We addressed it first in twenty-nineteen, uh, again, and so this is, uh, it's getting to pass the point that it's a good idea. This is a necessity, um, because of our purchase of new equipments as well. We simply cannot housing in an eighty-year-old building. So definitely, this is something that we need to seriously consider. Even though it is a big expenditure, the time is now to be serious about this issue. So thank you.
My apologies to Mayor Way. Uh, Councilor Shabba?
Okay, thank you, uh, Acting Mayor, um. Um, I, I read this, uh, in a hurry today, uh, is your week. And I'm just trying to understand this motion. Uh, I think I understand the, uh, intent and I support the outcome. Uh, what this is getting at, I'm full support of it. But I, I'd like to say to a clarification and maybe make a friendly amendment. Um, yes, we all know the building, you know, it's seventy, eighty-year-old. And people are all important and the sorry, was trying not to send out something that I related it in. Uh, about what you spoke about, Madam Mayor. So I'm fully supportive of this, but I, I want clarity upon, uh, on a few things. And I'd like to propose, uh, a friendly amendment to this motion there. Uh, one is, uh, we are, we're asking for preliminary design. Uh, I, I don't know what that means. I think maybe we should be asking for a conceptual design. You know, that way we can have various, uh, concepts, you know, in three D, what now this guy's taking the fancy stuff. Because when you say preliminary design, I mean, that's what you, that's, that's what it's meant here. I don't know, but it's just that in my world, when you say preliminary design. This means that you already take one, I just have to give you a point of time. So I just want to have a clarification on that. It has the intent of this. And, uh, the, the friendly amendment, and I discussed that with the mover of this, uh, motion here, comes in. Uh, the, uh, that the council requests an R S P for feasibility study. For renovations, slash expansion, a new site location. I, I will suggest that we get rid of renovation, get rid of expansion. And maybe that could be worth it because we don't want any consultant to go to that building and be telling us, looking at it and say, we can renovate it. I don't think that's the intent. And I don't want them to go to that building and say, well, maybe we can expand it north, south, east, west. I don't know if that's the intent. It may be this, I don't know. But I think the intent here is to maybe, uh, find, find a new location and then maybe get a conceptual design. From where we can essentially zoom into one design and, and then maybe hopefully happen here. That's, that's my comment.
Okay, um, floor back to Councilor Owens. Okay, now, Sika?
If you have a seconder case, speak to an amendment, yes?
Okay, do, do we have a seconder for the amendment? Okay, Dolly is seconding the amendment.
So I'll just read the amendment.
Okay.
It would be. Moved by Councilor Shabba, seconded by Councilor Dykens, to amend the motion. Uh, where the paragraph that says be resolved that. Uh, be amended to read, council requested an R S P for feasibility study for a new site location. Including conceptual design and cost estimates be prepared and issued. That's the proposed amendment presently. So just on the amendment.
Okay, um, Madam. Did you read that again? It said, I, I believe it read a new site?
Yes, so be resolved, the council request that an R S P for a feasibility study for a new site location. Including conceptual designs and cost estimates be prepared and issued.
Okay, yeah, so.
To Councilor Owens, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have, I wrote it this way in collaboration with our clerk to, to try. Like, I just figured it'd be part of the conversation, so I didn't, that's like for them, but I'm totally supporting. Your site location, like if that's the best alternative, this council agrees with that position, you know, then let's move forward and find a new. Design and build and find a plotland to build this thing on and that's all. So I don't have.
Um, Councilor?
Uh, to you, Acting Mayor, to council. Um, I think at this point, I think we have enough reports. I think we've had enough consultants looking into it. I don't think it's reasonable to spend more money to have somebody go and say. The site is not, or, or the current building is, cannot be renovated or cannot be expanded. So I would really like us to move forward to new site.
Uh, Councilor Ranger?
Through you.
Acting.
Acting Mayor. Uh, actually, to you, Councilor Owen, maybe you can speak, um, to the possibility of the addition of land ambulances being adjacent. Or is this not the place to answer that?
It's just on the amendment to the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you're in favor of.
Take that, yeah.
Uh, Councilor, or Mayor Way.
You're not voting on the actual.
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment.
Oh, great, that's it.
Not.
So with the new amendment, with the possible amended, um, wording, it does appear to remove the current location. Um. um, wording, it does appear to remove the current location, um, off the desired list, um, could I have the Fire Teeth, um, put his input whether that is a good location if we could remove the existing building? Because it is central to the entire community where it is, if it's even a legitimate option to have it the building removed, but the location be utilized.
Um, through you, Acting, uh, Mayor Owen. Yes, the location where the fire station currently is, in reality, is the best location for the kids. And it's a help for the community. Um, it's a great location. Uh, is it going to be hard to put a fire station there? It will because it's a tight spot, it's not a lot of land. Um, and if we're going to make this leap, we need to plan this for a forty year build. Like, this building needs to last us forty, fifty years. So let's build it once, do it, right? If we have to move, we have to move, but in my opinion, that's the best location. We have so many kids and it's a safe haven for them. Like, we're ahead, right?
Yeah, Counselor.
Yeah, well, I, I just went by, so I have no, uh, issue removing new, just the location.
Okay.
Okay, that would be the order of the new?
Yeah, new building.
Right, not the word renovate.
Yeah, no renovation, no.
I just, yeah.
New building. Yeah, wherever it's recommended.
Okay, so if I may, I keep looking.
Please, focus here.
Yes. Through you, Acting Mayor. Um, I, I'm getting that there's, and there wants to be another amendment to the amendment. So now the further amendment is to remove the word of new. So it would be, and, and it would be a friendly amendment again for Counsel, um, Shaba and Counsel Dykens to remove the word new, so you have to now vote on removing the word, yes or no on the, on the word new, but you have to call for the vote first because I don't want to have. On what's involved in the vote.
And we have all those in favor in moving the word new?
Okay, that's.
Opposed?
Okay.
Okay, now, we.
Chair?
Okay, so now can you read?
Yes.
Proposed motion, friendly motion?
So you want me to read the entire motion or you want me to read the further amendment?
Uh, just the further amendment?
Okay, so be resolved, the council requested an R S P for a feasibility study for a site location including conceptual designs and cost estimates be prepared and issued.
Okay. So all those in favor the, uh, amendment? Opposed, okay. Now we're going to vote on the whole resolution?
Yes, would you like me to read it?
Well, I wish. Okay, sorry.
You can, after reading. Such a chance. Through, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If it's the desire of council for me to read the entirety of the motion, continue to have this discussion if it wants clarity on, on on the question on the table.
Okay, it appears there is further questions to the motion, so if we could please read it.
Sure. Um, moved by Counsel Casey Owens, seconded by Mayor Stacy White, whereas Council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake acknowledged the advanced age and limitations of the current fire hall infrastructure. And where administration have identified several structural issues with the building, including but not limited to the restrictions where apparatus and fleet can be stored in the fire hall. And whereas the town's current fire hall at the Rodden Bay is limited in suitability for the existing fleet, including the frontline pumper truck. And whereas newly acquired aerial ladder truck is not able to be stored at the fire hall as the fleet bay is not suitable for parking or storage, adding delays to response times and emergency situations. And whereas the location identified for consideration and development services before dated January twenty first, twenty twenty, which was attached to your agenda, presented to the former council is no longer an available option. It resolved the council request that an R S P for a feasibility study for a site location including conceptual designs and cost estimates, cost estimates be prepared and issued and that sixty thousand dollars be drawn from the working capital reserve fund to retain consultancy services. And finally, that the findings be presented to council by way of an information report by the end of quarter three, twenty twenty four. Uh, I think that's, is that supposed to be quarter three or March twenty twenty?
Quarter one.
Quarter one, quarter one, twenty twenty four, that was a typo.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
None done.
What, so I'd just like to hear more, if we can, about Counsel Ranger's question, are we allowed to ask that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to all of council, if Madam, if Madam Counsel Ranger would like to pose her question now, she's still able to use the.
She's not my curiosity, so, yeah, I'd like.
Through you, Acting Mayor. Counsel Ranger, please. Through you, Acting Mayor, to Counsel Owen, sitting on the D S A board. Has there been any discussion, I know uh, D S A is responsible for land ambulance and that there could be potential for um, a rerouting of land ambulance services, has there been any discussion or that you can share, maybe it's pretty and that it would be a collaboration between D S A and the town, the county emergency services building?
Okay, I must admit, um, I've had a lot of family, uh, obligations and I missed the last D S A meeting. Uh, the next one was canceled, um. To my knowledge, there's been no discussion of combining, uh, paramedic and fire service into one location. Having said that, you will hear my report later from Ministry of Health that there are going to be, there is going to be more money put into land ambulance and more money put into paramedics. Um, so this may be an option that has potential, like, down the road. But at this point, I'm not aware of any, uh, discussions. So hopefully, I said nothing, I'm a politician, but I hopefully I answered your question. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, no further discussion? What, what, what?
I'm just trying to think of the language to use there. If it suits council, if they would like me to reread the motion or if they feel so they're happy to.
No, we're not.
Free to call for the vote.
Uh, I, I'm, I want to get out of here live tonight, so we are not going to reread the motion.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, asking now, and Mayor White, you can most certainly take the chair.
Um, item number eight, introduction, meaning in consideration of bylaws, eight point one, bylaw twenty three dash oh five seven.
Moved by Counsel Casey Owens, seconded by Counsel Janice Ranger, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three fifty seven being a bylaw to be lost thirty two and thirty three on a registered plan M one thirty five T not to be registered. Seventy six and eighty Federal Street.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, item unanimous. Item eight point two, bylaw number twenty three dash oh five eight.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel La Chava, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three fifty eight being a bylaw to be lost ten and eleven, uh, registered plan fifty four M three forty six, not to be registered, twenty nine Harvey Drive.
All in favor? Opposed, item careless, unanimous. Item eight point three, bylaw number twenty three dash oh five nine.
Moved by Counsel Janice Ranger, seconded by Counsel Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three fifty nine being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with T K Elevator Canada Limited for an elevator modernization upgrade to municipal facility, three Kirkland Street West, Town Hall.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item careless, unanimous, at this time, I will ask Acting Mayor Owen, Acting Chair.
I'll ask Madam Third to read the bylaw number twenty three dash zero six two.
Yes, moved by Counsel Casey Owens, seconded by Counsel Dolly Dykens. Sorry, I had to go on the fly there. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three sixty being a bylaw to execute documents related to a recent link over parts of mining claim eighteen twenty nine L two one oh three, T C seven oh nine and T C seven ten, parcel sixty eight seventy five ninety nine and eighty six seventy C S T with fifty government road west limited.
All those in favor? Opposed? And I'm going to assume there was no discussion.
Chair.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen. Item number eight point five, bylaw number twenty three dash oh six one.
Moved by Counsel La Chava, seconded, nope, not moved by Counsel La Chava. Um, no, it's okay, I have moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel Janice Ranger. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too, file number twenty three sixty one being a bylaw to execute a contribution agreement with N O H F C for funding under the Community Enhancement Program for the Service Expansion of, we actually, it's called Archer Drive Industrial Park.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item careless, unanimous. Item six point eight, no, eight point six, bylaw number twenty three dash oh six two.
Moved by Counsel Janice Ranger, seconded by Counsel La Chava, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three sixty two being a bylaw to execute documents related to an approach agreement over a portion of Park Mine and Plains twenty six forty four, parcel seventy one forty nine C S T with red and old naked.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, item careless, unanimous, item eight point seven, bylaw twenty three dash oh six three.
Moved by Counsel Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counsel Janice Ranger, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sale of the corporation be affixed there too. File number twenty three sixty three being a bylaw to authorize the execution of documents related to the sale of parts of sixty nine and seventy three Frank Street.
All in favor?
Three.
Opposed? None noted, item careless, unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, there were none. Item number ten, notices of motion, Counsel Shava, low speed vehicle.
We're not speaking to it, but you're.
I'm not speaking, yeah, yeah, yes, we have a motion.
None of motion.
We noticed a motion, I'm.
Yeah, so low speed vehicle fire program.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, any, uh, notices of motion from the floor this meeting? None noted. Uh, item number twelve, additional information, there was none. Oh, sorry, Counselors' reports, I just really want to get out of here, right? I have three pages as well, so. Counsel Dykens, please proceed.
Uh, through you, Madam, to Council, um, I attended a meeting of the Museum Advisory Committee on July nineteenth, twenty twenty three, and there's just one item I'd like to bring forward for your information. Um, as you know, there, there's, um, uh, capital projects that need to be done at the museum, and so the, um, Aerial Heritage Trust has, um, been in discussion with, uh, there's architects and with, uh, our, our director and with the museum itself, and so they've identified a priority, um, and approved a capital funding for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, so they're going to, uh, fix the back, uh, balcony, and I have no idea what this means, but cantilever deficiencies, um, repairs to the east porch and localized roofing repairs, that, that's kind of stage one, that's a tough priority. Uh, so this fall, they'll be, um, consulting with the contractor, not, you know, the plan, uh, the winter probably doing any pre-gravitations and planning so that when spring comes, they'll be ready to go because they have a narrow window of completing the project, so that's very good news, um, for our community, and then they've also identified um, a one to five year plan, so for year twenty four to twenty twenty seven, and then a five to ten year plan, um, twenty twenty eight to twenty thirty three, and this is, uh, my hope as part of the advise, or the Museum Advisory Committee, uh, when our new, um, manager of economic development or marketing, uh, comes aboard, that, um, that person will be used as a resource to help, um, shine a bright light on, on this, I think it's the, um, one of the most unknown gems that we have in our community, and so maybe they can provide some strategic marketing direction for us as well. I don't, I didn't consult with the, the director with, uh, the management there, but I think it would be a very good thing for our town and to promote the museum itself. Thank you.
Thank you, anything further from council members? Counsel Owen?
Yeah. Thank you, through you. Good worship to, uh, the rest of council, I'll give my, uh, shortest report first, uh, by along with, uh, the mayor and Counselor highly attended the International Overdose Awareness Day, um, it was a very moving service. Um, Charlie Angus, uh, sang a song that, uh, it almost brought me to tears, and when I talked him out, it turns out that the song was about a friend of his, that he he knew his friend all his life, they were born in hospital at the same time, we grew up together. And, uh, he lost his battle to addiction and, uh, and, uh, John Van Talk was there, our mayor gave a very, uh, moving, uh, address as well. Um, it's no secret that I have had, uh, my own battles with addiction. Um, the one I talked about is alcohol, and that was my main addiction. Um, I think it's, I think at least I hope that the attitude of the greater society is starting to change. There's a different, addiction is an illness. It's not a choice. I like to tell people, I chose to have my first beer, I did not choose to be an alcoholic. No one would. It takes too much work and it destroys everything you love. And it doesn't matter what the addiction, whether it's opioid or or alcohol, or whatever your addiction is. Um, you don't have a choice, you're not getting high to feel good. You, you're doing your addiction because you have to. Your mind is telling you, you have to do it, it's not fun. You will steal, you will lie, you will cheat. And it's an awful life, so I'm, I'm hoping that society is, is gradually changing its, uh, its attitude towards, uh, people with addictions. And, uh, I didn't mean to talk that long on addictions, but it obviously is a very personal topic to me. Um, on a happier note, I attended, uh, the animal conference with C A O Allen and Mayor Stacy. This, uh, was the first time that I had represented the town at a conference. And, uh, it, I certainly think that it was well worth it, um, in terms of my own personal growth, uh, it certainly was worth it. In terms of getting Kirkland Lake fame out there and, and, uh, exposing the town to, uh, not just ministers, but senior government officials, um, and, and, and other people who down the road, uh, who hadn't heard of Kirkland Lake may have a service that now they know Kirkland Lake, they'll watch for tenders and, and they'll bid, and, uh, from that perspective too, uh, I think it, uh, it was, uh, a good experience, um. At times, I was suffering from information overload. Um, you spend three days and your breakfast is at, I think, eight thirty in the morning, which for me is really early, but that means you're up at six because you gotta catch a shovel and and then you go right through supper time, I mean, there are breaks in there, um. So, I'm not going to lie, sometimes when the politicians are speaking, my mind wandered off to other places, happier places, but, uh, I did get a lot of information that I believe will be useful in making Kirkland Lake an even better place to live. And some of this information was gained at informal sessions. A lot of the information came from experts taking part in the, uh, in trade show or informal meetings with government officials, um. The mayor and I were walking along the hall and we, uh, had an informal meeting with the Associate Minister of Transportation, Chow. And he assured us that the Northlander is on schedule for twenty twenty four. And he assured us that the Northlander is on schedule for twenty twenty-four. And, uh. I thanked the Associate Minister, uh, Chow, and let him know how appreciative we are that the shelter. Is going to be built, and the fact that the train will be stopping in Kirkland Lake. Um, it was interesting to watch his assistant when I said. That shelter is so important, because you're standing on top of the hill, it's thirty below and the wind is blowing, well. The assistant, I don't think he's ever been in Northern Ontario, because his jaw kinda dropped. But, uh. Those are the chance kind of meetings where you get to let government know, hey, you didn't just include us in this project. We needed it and we appreciate it. Uh. I also. Uh, at the trade show, asked Representative Sahaja One for a report. On the reliability of electricity in Kirkland Lake area. Um, this company's bothered me for forty years. Um. So. Um. I noticed that while reliability hasn't improved, we still have four hour shutdowns. As well as unplanned interruptions, and these things don't happen in Toronto, Bradford and Peterborough, uh. You know, so I, I'm hoping when I get that report back, I will share it with council. Um. The Minister of Health told delegates that. There will be a six percent increase in funding for land ambulants. So that's good news. Um. Land ambulance over the years has been a bone of contention with who's paying how much, so. Uh, I'll take anything we can get, six percent sounds pretty good. Um. They are adding, uh, about three hundred paramedic spaces. Spaces were her words, so I don't. I'm not sure if she meant educational spaces or jobs. Either, either way, it's good news. Um. And that paramedic services across the province will be. Increasing. As well, the province plans on upgrading nine-one-one service. To allow paramedics to treat more patients on scene and in their homes. The minister announced there will be an. Increase in nurse practitioners. In rooms, facilities, and every part of Ontario. So every part who's Northern Ontario, so we'll wait and see on that one. Um, I also attended a, a, and, and I'm told that this was somewhat unique. In London, they had field trips to various locations, and, uh. Of course, with my interest in mental health, I. I took a trip to a crisis center, a ten bed crisis center. And it's operated by CMHA. Uh, the facility on the interior was designed so it would not look institutional. And it accepted people that are low to moderate risk. And they are able to stay at the facility for seventy-two hours, and so it's just to help them through that urgent period. Exceptions are made, uh, to accommodate special circumstances, like for instance, if a parent was coming in from other town and it was more than seventy-two hour. That patient or that client could, could stay till the parent arrived. Uh, the center has formed many partnerships in the community. Some of which are hospitals, paramedics, and police. Uh, they're all trained. People, and they're trained to assess and deal with people in mental health or, or drug crisis. Um, the interesting thing is, I, I mentioned it here. We, we have, uh, trained people through CMHA that go with police. Um, on, uh, falls of mental distress or possibly drug distress as well. Unfortunately. We don't have enough people, we send a uniformed officer. With the CMHA person. And that can be triggering to someone who's in a crisis. In London, they're big enough. And they have enough trained people. That they send a CMHA worker with a plainclothes officer. Um, it's the same concept, it's just a little better because they're bigger. Um. In addition to helping people in crisis, the ten bed facility has relieved stress on area hospitals. And, and that's, that's been a big deal. Because, you know, I, I used to think that psychiatric care, uh, was just a problem in, uh. Northern Ontario, um, but I have family members in, in southern, or a family member in Southern Ontario, not far from London. And it is also a crisis down there, there are not enough social workers, there are not enough. Um. Mental health counselors, and there's not enough psychiatrists. Or beds, beds is another big one, they don't have psychiatric beds. So this is taking a lot of pressure, I have stats here, but you don't need to read them, um. And, and what this center has, and it's something that they had to earn, the paramedics can now assess the patient. And bring them directly to this facility without going to the hospital further. And so that also, that's where a big relief comes in. Um. On the emergency department. Uh. The center is open twenty-four seven. Um. And while this is different than the treatment center that we are getting in Kirkland Lake. I plan on forwarding this information, uh, to the people that are involved in, in that plan, and there may be. Some, uh. Information that they will be able to adapt and use. So. Despite the fact that. Um. AMO was, uh, very tiring on the old man. Um. I, I believe that. Uh, it was certainly well worth it for, for what we will get back in return, so.
Thank you for that report, councillor Chaba.
Yeah, okay, um. I just want to, uh, report on the good news that some of my friends who are not in college. They're one of them too. But brought to my attention. So I probably have a lot of students, and then I continue for the other colleges that, that is tackled here, so I. Like, I'm graduating in college for that. Um. Also, that brings, uh, the issue of how. Uh, means for, you're talking to. Uh, extent that, uh, they have any. Outflouring in their basement, maybe they accommodate some of the, uh, things I can see there, I'll be looking at. But it's the thing I created. So I, well, we would be there, I'd say a lot of them by my office, I always say. But I'm prepared, I live on them, and I think I'm crazy, but I'm a true living at many of us. So it's very nice to, to see that, I know it'd be nice to. Uh, maybe a present by behavior to tell us all about it, but I just, I heard about it, and I'm very happy to be at that. So. That's good.
Certainly, anything else from council? None noted, I will continue with my report. I will speak fast. Uh, I attended the economic development meeting, which resulted in quite a few of the reports presented and voted on this evening. I also attended AMO conference with councillor Owen and CAO Allen Smith. This event was well attended with over two thousand members of the public sector in attendance. We had a joint delegation to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing with Danny Nealan, Deputy Mayor of Tumiskaminghours. Regarding the development in territories without municipal governance. This ministry has taken concrete steps to begin to fully investigate these issues with site visits as well. Uh, as well as including wording in the draft provincial planning statement, which is upcoming. Um, we, of course, they're gonna do their own announcements, that's the only thing I can say on that. Also, we had positive results regarding the pumping station at McTavish with the Honourable Kinga Sirma, Minister of Infrastructure. Um, and when we left, she reiterated that she will be following up with us. I attended the Building More Age Friendly Community session, which inspired me to come home and review our own age-friendly community plan. Um, I believe that we have more work to be done in this area to achieve it, and part of that is the parking. Um, that we voted on this evening, so there's definitely, uh, positive movement in that plan. When we make our community more accessible to our seniors. We absolutely make it more accessible to other members of the public, people with strollers, people with mobility aids. People with other different abilities, so the money that we spend on making our community more accessible for age-friendly. Um, is definitely worth the investment. I attended the Women's Breakfast with Lieutenant Governor Elizabeth Dowswell. In which we were joined via Zoom by Eliza Reid, First Lady of Iceland, who was born in Ottawa. Graduated the University of Toronto with a Bachelor of International Relations, and then Oxford. With an MA in Modern History, she is a writer and a volunteer and Woman of the Year several times. She was a true inspiration. I also attended the private dinner with the Northern Ontario Women's Caucus. Uh, with other female leaders from the north, during which we share our experiences, our triumphs, our difficulties, and sometimes funny stories that come our way. Working in the public sector. Um, I certainly value the time I spend with fellow, uh, fellow Northern Ontario leaders. Uh, we are always stronger together. The important announcements that I would like to, uh, reiterate. Uh, that was made during, they will return to the seventy-five provincial twenty-five percent municipal funding model for public health. And they made a commitment of an annual one percent increase in, for the next three years in funding. Um. As well as increased funding for voluntary amalgamations of health uniforms. I attended, um, in my field trip, the Kellogg's factory, it has since been purchased by about three or four, um. Private individuals' families and turned into an amusement mecca. Um, the individual that presented to us, however, voiced her concerns. Um, that the community did not aid them to the degree that they wished, so it is, um, a. A warning to us, if we wanna be good community partners ourselves, we really have to be engaging in these, um, businesses. Uh, on a personal note, we happened to run into Ashley Billado in the hallway. Uh, she's the former director and Mary Missed individual who led us to become the successful CAO calendar. And it's always lovely to see familiar faces in the crowd, especially when they're accompanied by warm hugs and, and just pats on the back, she was just thrilled to see us. It was a really nice, uh, moment. Uh. Since I had the opportunity to share my experience with the media shortly after I returned, I'd be, I'm just saying the same things over and over, so I'll move on. Uh, item number three, I had the opportunity to observe the Police Services Board meeting on August thirtieth, I have a deep appreciation for the volunteers on this board. They clearly take their roles quite seriously, and they are devoted to this community with professionalism and pride. I, I'm really just impressed with this, those members. I attended a luncheon given by Georgia Pacific in Ingleheart. In which the operations at their plant were discussed with local leaders and business people, including Reeve Sandra Parkin, Mayor Jeff LaFrenier. LaFrenier, uh, Mayor Sharon, Jerry East, and among others. Uh, while speaking with Jeff, uh, there was a robust conversation about the need for our northern communities to work collaborative. For the betterment of us all, and that's something that I definitely agree with, and, you know, certainly pushed from the beginning of my term. There were no major announcements that came out of this event, and kind of everybody was a little bit leery, we were waiting for like either a big positive announcement or. Not so great announcement, there was nothing. Um, it was the first luncheon of their kind, and they just wanted to announce their operation and make sure that everybody knew that. They have a commitment to the northern community, and I did hit them up for donations for the children's department refresh product. Um. Oh, and finally, I attended the event at the Toberne night for International Overdose Awareness Day. This is the largest global campaign to end overdose. Remember, without stigma, those who have died, and to acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind. In twenty twenty-three, the global organizers especially wanted to recognize the people who go unseen. To honor those whose lives who have been forever altered by overdose. Not only the families and friends left behind, but the workers in healthcare and support services. Who extend their strength and compassion, and the spontaneous first responders who happen upon a person in crisis. And are thrust into assuming the role of lifesaver. The impacts of overdose are life-altering for those people left behind, and they fall indiscriminately. Um, to that, thanks to staff at Law Blaws at the YIG. I do have an alarm, some kits available for anyone that needs them or would like to carry some. Around with you, they are in my office, which is currently locked, but. I'll have access tomorrow morning. So I do appreciate your time in indulging me with my report, and I will have the reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved with the virtual updates from members of council to be received.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. Now, item number twelve, additional information, there was none provided. Closed session, there is none this evening, matters from closed set, and obviously there is none. Confirmation by law number fifteen point one, by law number twenty-three dash oh six four.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be resolved with the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the mayor municipal clerk. And the sealed the corporation be affixed there too, file number twenty-three fifty-four. Being a bylaw in front of proceedings of council at a meeting held through this September fifth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. Adfirm it.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens, be involved with this rate of community council, in our turn, at. Six point six P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously.